I'd like to call our work session to order. Agenda item for today is really for us to receive and hear the superintendent's proposed budget. What we'll do is provide Dr. Boone and team to walk us through what they have prepared. Then, I assume after they've done that, we can come back with questions and comments and discussion. Just as a reminder, we will receive this presentation today. Then, next Wednesday on the 14th, the board will convene at four o'clock for a budget work session. That'll be held at South Side STEM Academy. Following that four o'clock work session, we will have a 7:00 PM public comment period on the proposed budget. And then, on the 21st, we will have one hold opportunity for an additional board work session. But right now, we're going to work towards adoption of a school board budget on the 21st, that then we're required by law to submit to the city by April 1st. So with that, Dr. Boone, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Jordan, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My how time flies. It seems we were just here discussing budget a few days ago, and we're here now to present the FY 19 budget. Want to recognize Rhonda Ingram and Pearl Toe. I always say it wrong, I'm sorry. Pearl Toe, you know, this is Pearl's first budget with the district since she returned to Norfolk Public Schools in the role of the budget director. So, we're pleased. This budget, as they will share throughout the presentation, is certainly a collaborative budget, just as we've done in the past. Members of the district leadership team and others have been fully engaged in this work, even conversations had with principals and others to help us think about how best to present this budget. Additionally, we've -- budget for us is not an event, it's a year-long conversation. And so, as we've talked about budget here at the governance team, we talk about budget almost daily within the administrative team and the district leadership team. I think what we see now happening with the budget is that not only is our process maturing, but so is our MPS redesign in such a way that is now the driving force behind our success. And that focus on increased stability within the district and improvements in academic achievement. We have a relentless focus on leadership, literacy, rigor, and innovation. And those four areas transcend all of district operations. And you know, our ultimate goal is to be a high-performing organization, one in which our academic outcomes are parallel by our operational behaviors. And such that, again, everything has that tight connection, that synergy, that allows us to know that one is codependent on the other, and how does that look, and how does that work. We still continue to face fiscal challenges of declining enrollment, the state's funding of public education still falling below where we were in fiscal years of 2009. And that remains a challenge for us. There's significant uncertainty with the federal budget. And while Congress has approved a resolution, a budget that wouldn't allow us to have to deal with continuing resolutions every three weeks to two months or so, what we have not received is the appropriations of that bottom-line dollar budget. So, we don't know the full status of our federal grants. We are being proactive in terms of our administrative conversations around grants. And, you know, this is a long session for the General Assembly. So, we'll be back with the board and to the board about various pieces of revenue and any impacts on our budget as we go forward. Today, you will hear about the differences between the governor's budget, the House budget, and the Senate budget within the state. This budget represents 1.2% increase. Let me say that out loud again. This budget represents a 1.2% increase, or $4 million. So, as you can see, even though our needs are great, we've taken the key steps that were needed to deal with structural imbalances. And last year was a tough budget year, both in terms of what I had to present and what the board finally adopted, and where we had to make adjustments based on the final city appropriations. We still face those challenges. And so, our responsibility is how do we address our needs and put forward what our needs are based on our current direction of the district and what we need to accomplish, and yet still be somewhat forward-thinking about opportunities and what gaps are. You will hear in this budget our recommendations for Phase Two of our pay and comp study, which is significant to that shift of the culture and the climate in the high-performing organization, and to validate the work that goes on with our people. What we know is that school districts are people-intensive, that's the nature of our work, so most of our money goes into salaries. But then, what are the associated programs and systems of support that we would want to have there? You're going to also see and learn about some recommendations that are included to address some of the things we learned from the review of our alternative education program, and some decisions we're making based on data that we have in terms of supports that some schools need over others. We could look to continue the growth of our CTE, Conference of CTE High School, as well as opportunities for enhancing the arts program at Bogertie. So, all of these are the things that you will see, which makes it not an annual conversation, but the pieces that we're building upon for success. So, with that, I'm going to stop, because I believe Ms. Ingram and Ms. Pearl are ready to walk us through this. What I would ask, Mr. Chairman, if that, if they could do the presentation, if you could dog ear your page on your copy of the PowerPoint, or whatever you would like to do, jot your notes down, so that then we would be glad to come back and answer any initial questions that you may have based on today's presentation. And certainly, as we go into next week's work session, we'll be in a place to answer additional questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. Good afternoon, Mr. Jordan, Dr. Gabriel, school board members. I'll be presenting to you the high-level view of Dr. Boone's superintendent's proposed budget to you for next fiscal year, 2018, 2019. First of all, we always like to start off with the guiding force and supporting for what we are doing is the school board's divisions' priorities. I'm not going to read them all, but I just have them in the presentation to say that this is what we are following, as well as on the second, next page, the NPS theory of action. You know, that we had our mid-year PD, and it was presented what our theory of action was for the school division. And it's our promise to the students, the parents, and the community, and to ourselves as employees, what we are guiding force -- I'm sorry, it's not advancing. There it is. What our guiding force is for Norfolk Public Schools. I just wanted to put that in there as well, to show that it's not just an academic theory of action, it's for the entire district and the finances and operations as well. One too far. I want to give you briefly what the budget process is, or has been. Like Dr. Boone says, it's a year-long process. We start in October, where we set detailed instructions to the departments. In November, they prepared their budgets, and we had our first public hearing on the proposed budget. In December, the governor's budget was introduced, and we also met with department heads to review their budgets, their requests for the current year, and we also looked at their requests for next year, their current year budget, and historical or actual numbers for 2016 and 17. In January, February, we got preliminary estimates and expenditures that were presented to our district leadership team and the superintendent. And we had an exercise where we prioritized those needs. And I think Dr. Boone shared with the board earlier of an exercise we went through in January, where we broke up into teams, three teams, who look at all of the requests. And the common, there was three common themes that came throughout from all groups as to what they saw was the need for the district. And I thought it was a very good exercise that we all were looking at what was best for Norfolk Public Schools and the students. No one was possessive and looking at just my area, but they were looking at the district as a whole. And I thought that was a very productive exercise. And it's the first time we did it in Norfolk. I've done it before, and it just came, gelled together very well. And that shows you how well the leadership is working, and how we're all coming together to one common goal, to do what's best for the children. This month, today, Dr. Boone is presenting her budget to you. We will have a public hearing, and two public hearings, and then on April 1st, by law, we required to have your budget sent to the city. What I want to start off with is just to give you a high-level view of what the current budget is for our current school year. It's a $325.3 million budget, and we get most of our money from the state, 58.7%. 38.3% comes from the city, 1.7% comes from federal, and then we have 1.2% from local On the expenditure side, we're showing you by major category, just really to show you that 84.7% or 85% of our current budget goes towards wages and benefits for our staff. Like Dr. Boone was saying earlier, we are labor-intensive, so 85% of our budget basically goes towards the staff that we have. And then, that leaves us with 15% to do the other work that's required for the district. In the budget for this year, we started the first phase of implementation of the pay and comp study. As you recall, we developed a 30-step scale, and we tried to make even increments between steps. And this year, we placed people on that scale so that they will not lose any money as the first phase, and the second phase will be addressed this year, in 19, I'm sorry. We added Grade 7 to the new South Side STEM Academy at Camp Estella. We finished the Year Three development for the support for the Academy of Discovery in Lakewood. We restored some ITRT positions, you recall. We haven't met the requirements yet, but this year, we added five more. We continued the implementation for the school health services, which were our nurses, where they had migrated from the city and the state. We increased facility repair and maintenance, and we continued our efforts with our district redesign. So, springboarding from the 18 budget, what we are continuing, and the priorities for the FY 2019 budget is to do Phase Two of the pay and comp study, to add Grade 8 to the South Side STEM Academy, which would make it a full K-8 school. We're going to continue to restore positions towards meeting that mandate for the ITRT. We have funding in the budget to support technology replacement, taking advantage of the E-rate funding. We have funding to support behavioral intervention and support programs in our schools, also funding to support the maintenance needs, and to continue the efforts of the district The next slide is challenging to look on the screen, but you have the PowerPoint presentation before you. It's a comparison between the governor's budget that was introduced in December and the House and Senate budget that came out. And I'm just going to point out some of the differences in them. If you go down to, one, two, three, the fourth line item where it says no salary increase funded in 2019, that's the, remain the same for the governor, the House, and the Senate. There is no funding in there for salary increases for 2019. Below that, it talks about salary increases effective December the 21st in the governor's budget. They changed that date on the House side to July 2019, but then the Senate is still not proposing any salary increases for 2020. Under the one, which was funding full-time elementary principals effective in 2020, the House and the Senate does not support that version, so there will be no funding in their proposals. In the governor's budget, it proposed that we will lose funding slots of 105 students, which change our slots from 1393 to 1288, which results in a decreased funding of $430,000 in revenue from the state. In the House version, it removed the funding from the governor's introduced, I'm sorry, there was no action taken, so they pretty much agreed with the governor. But on the Senate version, they agreed with the governor, but they also proposed to increase the funding per slot, to increase it from $6,125 to $6,500. And there was no change in the governor's budget to the supplementary lottery per pupil. And in the House version, they were increasing it, and the Senate was the same as the governor. So, overall, if you compared the House budget to the governor's budget, it would be an increase of $1.1 million, or the Senate version would be an increase of $190,000. The next page is just showing you the dollar impact. If you compare our current budget to the governor's budget, to the House, to the Senate, it's showing you the same thing that was, of the verbiage was on the previous page. So, the change from the House was 1.1 million, and the Senate was basically 200,000. I would like to call your attention to, under the state category program, under VPSA, where you see in FY 2018, we had $1.6 million. Governor House and Senate version has zero. That is basically an accounting change. If you remember, three, four years ago, VPSA technology grant monies was in our grant section of the budget book, and it got moved to the operating budget. We are recommending and proposing, we are going to move it back to the grant section, because the funding we get for that is not an annual grant. It doesn't end June 30. It carries over. So, if it's in the operating budget, it's very challenging to get everything cleared by June 30, when it's allowed you to go beyond. So, we're just shifting it from the operating to our grant section. And we get to talk about grants, you'll see where that has increased some, to take care of that.
Can you just share what the acronym VPSA is, real quick?
Virginia Public Schools Authority.
Authority, okay.
Right, and it was funding to support technology.
Technology.
I think they floated some bonds for that.
They do.
That's how we get it.
So, looking on the next page, we're looking at the estimated revenue for 2018, 2019. We decided to use the governor's budget. There's too much difference between the House and Senate version, so we are erring on the safety side right now. Like Dr. Boone says, once we get the final budget approved, then we will come back with recommendation based on whatever the revenue is for those sources. I want to call out, point out to you the red asterisk for the city funding, that 121 million includes the $3 million of one-time money that the city gave us this year. So, we're proposing in our budget that that becomes regular appropriation plus an additional $3 million. And you know, there was talk of a funding revenue sharing formula, that hasn't come to fruition yet. We have had several meetings, but there hasn't been any determination or agreeance as to what the funding sharing formula will look like. The next page, on page 14, is just a breakdown of the city funding, again, by category. There's three sections in the city appropriation. We get regular appropriation, which is reoccurring every year. Then, of course, the one-time appropriation, which was they gave us this year. And then, the debt service, CTI stands for Construction, Technology, and Infrastructure. Several years ago, there was a real estate tax increase, and that money was supposed to go towards help funding debt for new schools. And they put it in our revenue, but we can't spend that, those funds. So, even though we make it $124.6 million, $3.6 million of that does not go towards our operation, because on the expenditure side, it's just an offset, just to show that we are entitled to get those funds, where the school division does not get to use them on operations. In the past, they have, if they had not spent that money before they started with the debt portion of it, they had given us an appropriation or authorization to spend some of that money, I think it was on technology, a couple of years ago. That portion of the CTI, we got to spend on technology, but that was only one year, and then it went back to the debt portion.
As we've opened the schools now, the debt is coming due.
So, on page 15, it's just a pie chart to show the FY 2019 revenue, with 192.6 million coming from the state, or 58.5%, 127.6 million coming from the city, or 38.8%, our federal dollars, 5.7 million, or 1.7%, and then other local and miscellaneous revenue at 1% or $3.4 million. With that three, with those dollars, this is what is supported in the proposal that we are submitting today. Under compensation and benefits, on page 16, we are proposing salary increases, which would be Phase Two of the pay and comp study. We are proposing to increase the starting salary of our teachers. We're proposing to increase the long-term substitute daily rate. We're proposing to increase the bus driver's starting hourly rate. We're proposing incentives for Howard to staff schools, and our health insurance premium appears to be a 2% increase this year. Under behavioral intervention and support programs, we're proposing to add behavioral specialists in some of our schools. We're also proposing to increase in the elementary school for in-school suspension monitors. On the next page, some of our staffing changes include staffing reductions due to enrollment loss. I have a slide later in the presentation that will show you what that enrollment loss is projected to be. Preschool classes to support non-state-funded local option program. Earlier, I talked about we were losing 105 slots, which equated to six classrooms, a 12 position, which was six teachers and, six teacher assistants. We're proposing to use some of those positions to begin a non-state-funded local option program. We also have included in the budget arts teachers to support the STEAM program at Bogertie Washington High School. Teachers to support Grade 8 at the South Side STEM Academy, an athletic trainer. The program at Old Dominion is phasing itself out, so we are phasing in athletic trainers at our high schools. Continuing the effort to meet state mandates of our instructional technology resource teachers. Funding to support part-time medical advisory when we brought in the health services or the nurses from the city and public health. We really did not have any medical advisor, doctor, support there, so we're proposing to get that into the district. We have a public relations position, and some position changes in transportation. Technology E-rate, you aware of the E-rate where we get funding at a reduced rate, 20%, I believe, of the actual cost? And we have been, for the past three years, putting money in the budget to take advantage of that, and I think it may have another year or two to go, but we want to try to get as much in as we can before the money dries up and gets taken away. So, we have a proposal in the budget to address that. And then, funding to support building, repairs, and maintenance. On the Phase Two of our pay and comp study, again, we said we're going to raise the teacher's starting pay on the bachelor scale to $44,000 from $43,622. Later in the presentation, I have a slide to show you where that will put us in rankings with our surrounding districts. We are proposing to adjust the scale slightly to increase the percentage between the beginning steps. When we did the 30-step scale last year, the first three to four steps were a smaller percentage than the rest of the scale. So, what we are doing is increasing that percentage to make it more evenly throughout the scale. We are proposing to provide a step increase for all employees. And as it relates to the different sets of employees, this proposal that we have in the budget for teachers will receive an average of 3.3% salary increase, which would range from 1% up to 4.4%. Administrators, an average of 3.2%, which will range from 0.9% to 3.6%. And on the support side, an average of 3.3%, which will range from 1% to 4.1%. And bus drivers, an average increase of 6.2%. This slide is showing you a comparison of the teacher salaries, starting pay on the bachelor scale. Currently, you see we're at number, tied for the third slot. But with the proposal in this budget of 44,000, it was put us in number two, right behind Virginia Beach. And this is based on the current FY 2018 scale. For the long-term substitutes, degreed, currently, our rate, we are at number three from the top. The proposal to raise the rate to $150.30 would put us at the top above Chesapeake in the area. Bus driver's starting pay, the first slide to your left shows where we started FY 2018 at $13.02 an hour. Last school board meeting, you approved the pay increase of changing them to the next grade effective March the 1st, and that put us at $13.68 an hour, which was number two behind Virginia Beach. What we are proposing in 2019 is do another step increase, not step increase, grade increase, and that to $14.35 would put us at the front of our area division, in hopes of that attracting and maintaining to keep us from having so many vacancies throughout the year. Again, the health insurance increase is 2% to be shared between the employer and employee. And they were currently with Norfolk Health Consortium, Mr. Bills and I are on that committee now. We were currently in discussions about if there'll be any plan changes, but the average, the increase this year, it will be 2%. The next slide on September 30th enrollment, it shows you our enrollment decline or trend since 2019. And the projected for, this is September 30th, for next year, is 28,221, a decrease of 647 students. Or, if you look at between 2009 and 2019, we have lost 4,051 students in the district. On the next page, talks about our staffing changes. Here again, with the reduction in enrollment, it's 15 position, which is primarily in our elementary schools. We have received projections from Mr. Footy, by school, by grade, and by using that in looking at what the K-3 class size reduction calls for as to the class sizes, and what the max is at Grade 4 and 5, it says that we can lose 15 teachers.
And let me, because I can see.
Vacancy.
I feel it.
That's what I get to come.
I feel it, okay, you got it.
Teacher positions. There are teaching positions. Currently, we have a lot of long-term subs working this year, so those positions that are currently filled with long-term subs or vacant real positions are the ones we're talking about. We're not talking about any types of riff in the teaching for the operating budget. It can be absorbed with the current vacancies that we have.
So, again, I say, we are not looking for a riff as it relates to the operating budget. However, we have to stay tuned as it relates to the federal budget. Should significant grant reductions or eliminations occur, we would have to come back and revisit. But based on the operating budget, we are not looking to have a reduction enforced. We can handle those positions through attrition, as, and as Ms. Ingram has said, through our various We can handle those positions through attrition, as and as Ms. Ingram said, through our various vacancies, long-term subs that we have, we can right-size within that area.
Second item is reduction of VPI classes. This is based on the reduction of slots of one oh five, so here we are showing that we are reducing the six classrooms, and later in the slide, you'll see where we are adding them back for the three classes we are proposing. The warehouse supervisor is a reclassification to other funds. In our warehouse area, for our warehouse drivers, they're being supervised by Supervisor and Child Nutrition Services, so we have been splitting the supervisory position between the operating and child nutrition, and there's been a recommendation and an agreeance pretty much between child nutrition that they will report to facilities. So if they're reporting to facilities, then we do not have to pick up that point five of a supervisory position. So that's to be a point five of a savings in the operating budget. Behavioral specialists to provide behavioral intervention and support is three positions. Instructional technology resource teachers, again, we are proposing to increase it by five. This would bring us up to a total of twenty-five, and as a district, our size, we will need twenty-eight. So then, the next line item is three classes to address the non-state funded local option preschool program. So you see where we reduced the six, then we are proposing to add three back, which will be three teachers and three pairs. We're proposing three position of arts teachers to support the STEAM program at Booker T. Washington. One athletic trainer position, again, is due to the last cohort being at Old Dominion University, so this position is being offset partially by a decrease in contract services where we would have been paying ODU. It goes towards help supporting that position. We are also proposing additional in-school suspensions, can't say it right, suspension monitors. Last year, we had seven positions in the budget off funding to continue the part-time support that we gave in twenty seventeen. So this year, we actually continued the part-time salary support for them. What we're proposing in the twenty nineteen budget is to add seven more positions, which will give us fourteen full-time positions, and with that, we'll be able to provide one person to each school that is above five hundred in student enrollment, and that will cover all of our elementary schools above five hundred with a full-time in-school suspension monitor. And for those schools with four hundred and one to five hundred, they receive seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars to support part-time. And below four hundred and one, they receive three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars in part-time dollars to support in-school suspension. So we're in, this year, we didn't really have a plan as how to apply the dollars. Next year, we're proposing this plan as a way to give those schools with greater enrollment more support, full-time positions, and the other schools will get support with funding for part-time positions. In our communications department, we have one position that will become invigant, so with a restructuring of that position, there's a proposal to take that one position and turn it into two different positions and which will cover all but a slight amount of money additionally to cover that, those dollars to support information compliance and community functions. And then in transportation staffing changes, what's being proposed here is Mr. Kleinbelle is proposing, if you recall, last year, when we were going to transporting pre-K four in transportation, we added, we had to purchase twelve buses, and we added twelve bus drivers to that because we did not know what the full impact was going to be. With the program going this year, we have not needed all of the bus driver positions. So Mr. Kleinbelle is making a recommendation to eliminate six bus drivers position in order to fund a field supervisor position. He says, with our buses on the road after regular hours and late during the night, he really does not have a field supervisor that's on duty that will assist if there, anything happens on the road. So he's requesting to have one field supervisor to add one auto tech, because we did increase the number of buses in our fleet. And then he's also proposing, on our special ed buses, we have part-time bus attendants, and he's proposing over a two- or three-year period to have full-time bus attendants versus the part-time people. So what he'd be doing is decreasing some of the part-time dollars in order to support fifteen full-time positions. So his position request is a net zero impact to the budget, it's just reallocating the resources that are currently within his budget. So if you look at all of that, the net change is a net nine point five increase in the budget proposal for twenty nineteen.
For the entire division?
For the entire division. Positions. On the next page, in balancing the budget, basically, it is showing you what the major increases were and the major decreases in order for us to get, when we say balance the budget, it means our revenue equal our expenditures. We do not yet know what the funding is going to be, thank you. We do not yet know what the funding is going to be from the city side or what the final state funding will be, but in producing a balanced budget, it basically means revenue equal expenditures. So on the increase side, we have the salary increase, which is six point eight million. The increase in substitute rate is point five million. Upgrade the bus driver's starting hourly rate, incentives for hard-to-feel schools, the health insurance increase to replace the switches for technology is point eight, and I want to point, stop here, is it's eight hundred thousand dollars, but we'll be spending about maybe two point five million or two point six million actually is the value of the equipment we are purchasing, because on the E-rate, we only pay the twenty percent. So this is where we are really trying to take advantage. And if you recall, especially Dr. Gabriel and Dr. Robinson, when we've been talking in the facilities committee meeting, we have done some of that work this year with some old CIP money. So this will allow us to complete the other twenty schools that we have not been able to do, to bring us up to par. Capital needs increase for repair and maintenance is four hundred thousand dollars. This is an increase, but you know, we have a lot of needs, but we're doing what we can with that. Staffing changes, the two position netting, the two changes here, two positions, savings from the decrease in the VRS rate is there. From moving the VPSA expenditures to the grant, that's the savings there, and it's less than what you would see on the expense side, is because there is a twenty percent local match that we have to maintain for that VPSA grant. So the twenty percent remains in the operating budget, and the rest of it will go to the grant section. And then attrition savings of three point two million dollars. I think that's the highest we've ever budgeted in the budget for attrition savings from the get-go, but based on historical, looking back at the budget and the vacancies we have incurred and the vacancy we have currently this year, we feel like that amount we should be able to absorb next year going forward. So with that, our budget is balanced. Like I said, our revenue equals our expenditures. The next page is just a pie chart to show you the large categories, again, with eighty-five percent of that being employee benefits and about fifteen percent still being with other costs. And this slide, I keep talking, I'm going to get you to do this, because I'm not clicking as I talk. I'm sorry.
I got it.
Expenditure is another presentation of the pie chart that's showing you the numbers. What we're also doing in this presentation is to show you change in impact aid. You know, we had reported to you earlier, we were looking at change in the process, trying to identify more federally impacted students. So this year, we did more of a PR campaign to make awareness of the impact aid. We changed our survey card, we put Dr. Boone's message on the back of the card, and you just flip it over to fill it out. We even came up with two different color cards. Those students that we knew who were federally impacted was one color, and those we did not know was a different color, so that way will be easier for processing. We had more detailed instructions and checklists for principals, impact aid coordinators, and home room teachers. We provided detailed instruction to the parents on how to fill out the form. We had frequently asked questions and helpful hints to provide for impact aid coordinators. We sent our robo-call messages. We displayed the survey date on the school's marquee, and we even created flyers and posters that were put up in the front of the buildings to make everyone aware. And me and Ms. Spade in the accounting department went on channel forty-seven with a segment talking about impact aid, and we also had the three gentlemen retired that was also assisting on the military end, who was putting out the flyers and so forth to get the military more aware as to what's involved or what is impact aid. So those are the changes that we put into place this year. On the next slide, up here, it's basically giving you a history of what our federally connected students were from twenty, two thousand and nine to twenty nineteen, and you see that big dip there in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, I think, is when carrier groups and so forth left the area, so we saw that big decline. With the PR campaign we did so far, when we submitted our application in January, we did see a slight increase in those who were federally impacted. So with the cards that we submitted at that first submission, you will get a second submission at the end of June, we've seen a hundred and fifty-nine increase in the number of cards.
Are we in FY eighteen or nineteen right now on this chart?
The survey is FY eighteen, but the revenue, we will receive in nineteen. That's why it's like that.
So you're seeing a projected increase.
And this is like, for the funding, and that's just as of January.
Right, okay.
On the next slide is telling you what's next with impact aid, what we are doing currently. We had about six thousand cards that were not returned, so what we're actually doing, I think, we are sending out letters this week, I had a letter to Dr. Boone, I think, to go out this week to those parents of the six thousand that we did not send back, urging them to return those cards to see if we could pick up more federally connected. We also going to do a quality assurance check on those cards that did not qualify, just to make sure that we didn't miss any in our first reporting. What of note is what I wanted to put down here at the end, with all of that and our efforts trying to increase our numbers of federally impacted aid, in the president's twenty nineteen funding for impact aid, he's actually recommending to reduce funding. So that still remains to be seen as to what happens in that way, but either way, I think the effort that we are trying to put forth in identifying those students will benefit the district overall. You got it. What's left to do to complete the phase in of the pay and comp study, there's a couple of more areas that we feel like we may need to address. The new CTE high school specialty programs, in-school suspension monitors, we're going to take another deeper look into that and see if we need to provide more assistance there. The final phase of restoring the instructional technology resource teachers, if this budget get approved, we only need about three, four more, so next year, we propose to complete that phase in. Replacement in our bus and our white fleas. We have some buses that are quite, we have over a hundred buses that's on the road that is eighteen to twenty years old, and the state usually recommends, I think, a fifteen-year life or something like that. And as you're aware, the funding we get for bus replacements currently is just a million dollars from the city, which can get us approximately twelve buses. So we need to try to be creative as to ways to get funding to replace our buses. Last year, a couple of years, Mr. Kleinbelle sought, and we got a rebate from the diesel program, where we got twenty thousand dollars for each bus we took off the road. So we got two hundred thousand dollars, and we took that two hundred thousand dollars and purchased new buses. He also applied for it again this year. We did not receive it this year, we own like, we are number five on that list, so we haven't gotten it yet, but we are looking for ways of trying to come up with funding to replace our buses. Technology needs and capital needs, you know, there are technology needs as to for as the PPE, the FFNE for Camp Allen, there's technology needs to address the facility assessment, the condition index, so all of that is still things that we are left to do. Next, we're going to look at the grant outlooks. Again, we're pulling on what the president has proposed in his budget. In his budget, he's proposing to maintain funding at the FY twenty eighteen level for Title I for IDEA with a proposed increase in IDEA and in Carl Perkins, but you're aware, and I think Jamie will attest to, even this year, our funding decreased twice, I believe, in Title I funding. And he's also proposing again to eliminate Title II, support effective instruction, which is the old TPT, teacher principal training, and Title IV is one of the grants, I think, we just got this year, and now he's proposing to take it out again. So like Dr. Boone says, these grants here have people in them, and if they, not funding by the federal government, will have some staffing impact. At the moment, we just don't know what that will be. So the next slide is proposed budget all funds, which is our operating budget, which is being proposed for three hundred and twenty-nine point three million dollars or four million dollar increase. School nutrition fund, nineteen point two million. Grants fund is thirty-eight point two, thirty-eight million or three million dollar increase. Part of this three million dollars is the VPSA grant that was moving from the operating budget, and then the other portion is anticipation of applying for a new grant, which is Pearl?
Extended learning.
Extended learning grant. And the capital projects, we need a whole lot in capital projects. I basically pulled this number from what's currently in the city's budget as to their proposed capital and what they're proposing to give to the school division, which does not take into effect account our facilities condition index. So with all funds, our proposal is three hundred and eighty-eight point five million dollars for school year twenty nineteen. And the timeline, on March the fourteenth and March the twenty-first, we will have a school board public hearing on the proposed budget. On March the twenty-first, anticipation of the school board adopting a twenty nineteen, FY twenty nineteen budget. On April the first, we must have our budget submitted to the city council, to the city. The city has scheduled their public hearing on the city's budget on April the eighteenth, and they have scheduled to appropriate school funding on May the twenty-second. So basically, that concludes the high-level overview of the superintendent's proposed FY twenty nineteen budget. We can now have questions?
Again, thanks to Rhonda and Pearl and all who've been part of this. I hope you see through this the themes of what we're trying to do. Because we are a labor-intensive organization, how do we take care of our labor pool and our commitments around that work? But also, how do we drive success in other areas such as our general operations, the support for schools with behavioral specialists, because we do have some schools that have experienced some significant challenges. Often, we hear people say, oh, we need a dean. Respectfully, a dean is a pathway to suspension and transition back from suspension. Behavioral specialists being able to get in and support students that are having significant challenges in the schools, and we don't have another system of support, because we can't just use suspension as our only intervention. And so that's, that's one of the challenges. And so we're trying to support all facets of the school district with this budget, as well as- well as being sensitive to conversations and recommendations and thoughts that board members have had over time in terms of direction that we go collectively as a governance team. So don't have a blank check. There are some that would say, why didn't you ask for more? That's a double-edged sword. Damned if you do, damned if you don't. And usually don't get money either way. So this is where we felt, where I felt that was a very realistic budget request that also gets us some significant goals that the board has had and that we have as an administrative team as we continue our progress. Because what we know, we have experienced progress. We've seen, two years ago, thirty-nine percent of our schools, only thirty-nine percent of our schools were fully accredited, sixty-one percent weren't fully accredited. Today, sixty-one percent of our schools are fully accredited, and the progress is happening across all schools. And we know we have a lot of work to do. But again, we're asking for what we need in order to advance certain things. There's not a lot of growth in this budget, as you see. So there are some things, and I appreciate when we talk about what Rhonda and Pearl putting here, when we talk about what are some next steps, some things not addressed in this budget? Because those are some additional goals that we have. And I'm still optimistic that we will get to a true shared funding conversation with the city versus what it has been so far. And hopefully, we can get away from this annual jockeying for funding for public education. I want to thank everybody for that. And again, we are ready and open for questions and discussions.
So this is a lot to absorb at one time. And I'm sure everybody has notes and questions as I have. I would recommend, why don't we go back to page nine of the presentation? That's where it gets to the what's included in the fiscal year twenty eighteen. And then we can just kind of go section by section. And any questions or comments, we can get out there. Just a reminder, we are going to have a work session next week where we can really go into detail. But right now, just to try to give some initial thoughts you may have that you'd like to give to the superintendent or to us, to the colleagues, or any specific questions that you would like answered, which may not get answered today, but can get provided to us collectively as we work towards the fourteenth.
If I can, Mr. Jordan, page nine represents what's in our current budget.
I'm sorry.
So page ten is where we pick up.
Page ten.
And then several pages later, you'll find additional detail about those.
Thank you for that, page ten. So anyone have any initial thoughts on the list of funding priorities for fiscal year twenty nineteen on page ten?
I'll just go ahead and start. Or go ahead. Oh, yeah, you can. So we're going to be in year two of the pay and comp study with this fiscal year of nineteen, right?
Yes.
And are we still on track for a four-year implementation?
We think so.
Okay. So that's good to hear. I like that. ITRT, you indicated that after this year, we'll have about three to four positions to go, and then we'll be meeting state standard?
Yes.
Okay. And I heard the eighty percent, twenty percent E-rate. Is there anything else that we're doing on the technology front? I know in Richmond, they were trying to legislate a one-to-one in terms of devices and having children take tests on devices that they would have. Where are we in terms of moving the division forward technologically in that way?
We are not proposing to the district at this point a one-to-one program. The infrastructure work that happens with this E-rate work gets us closer to being ready. As you recall, this, the twenty, twenty-one schools that are being outfitted this year with new switches and everything will allow them more reliable internet access, faster access, as well as digital content access. So once we do this for another set of schools, where all of our schools will be in a good place, then I think we will be at a point where we are ready to recommend perhaps some one-to-one devices or some additional devices. We continue to purchase Chromebooks and iPads and different things to support the instructional program and the assessment program. But we haven't made it a whole scale piece yet because if the infrastructure was lacking, it would just serve to frustrate everyone.
I just would say, we really can't do enough when it comes to technology and we can't catch up fast enough. So if we had all the money in the world, I would say that would be one area that we would want to enhance. I understand the whole behavioral intervention. What is the prioritization and how much do you think you're applying to the facilities, maintenance, and capital needs? I saw that it's two million that you're assuming from this year to last. I get it, this year to next year, and that's capital.
The capital, what's in the operating budget is to maintain what's currently there and look like it's a four hundred thousand dollar increase.
What's the total?
Total, you got the total?
One point three four facilities and then another four hundred thousand, so about one point seven.
And then have we identified where we would use those monies?
Yes, we have some priorities and some more.
We have a list of needs. This is just the regular day-to-day maintenance that covers roof leaks, HVAC breaks. That's what it's going to go to, all of that. And which, I think I shared with the board last year of Mr. Pooters' projection as to how long system is going to be staying online. And they went offline this year in the order that he projected them to be. One thing that we are doing in the facilities committee meeting is, we are still in the process, we had some old grants that we finally got closed out, and we have been utilizing those funds to address a lot of the chiller and cooling tower needs. So there are still more on the plate. But as we address and close projects and money becomes available, we are putting it towards those chillers and cooling tower needs.
Okay. And then I'll end with this question. How are we with funding additional textbooks, either digital or otherwise, so that children can have textbooks that they can use at school and take home?
We should be in a good place. We hear that come up often, or sometimes throughout the year, others usually in the public comment period. And I'm looking over at Dr. Rogers, I was looking for Dr. Cataldo also. Oh, you see, we have an adoption that we will be bringing forth later this year.
For which content?
Foreign language. And so then those result in those purchases. We certainly, just today, I saw the email go out about the consumable needs. So some of our reading supports and some of our science kits have consumable materials with it, what that replenishment cycle will look like. We aren't, you know, we've seen isolated cases where there have been some shortages. But in general, we have enough textbooks to cover what our student needs.
Because I was hearing from parents on the foreign language front-
Correct.
-that they were not able to do that. Students were sharing in class, they were not able to take home, and that they needed to leave them in the class for the next, let's say, Spanish two class to take.
And probably some of that has happened because the additions that they're using are out of print, and we're getting ready to go into an adoption. And so, you know, what do you do when you can't locate and spend the money? But we will certainly be purchasing foreign language textbooks at a rate so that students have their own books and don't have to have classroom sets of those.
And they can take them home.
Right, when it's there, and classroom set stays there. So we're saying not having classroom sets, but rather having enough textbooks for students enrolled in the various foreign language courses.
Okay. That's all I'll ask for now on that page. Thanks.
Beam and Ms. Wagner?
So I'm happy to see funding to support behavioral intervention and support programs. And I believe there, those are three positions. Are those sufficient to, or can you describe the role of those? Would they be, I know we previously talked about a safe school specialist. That is a grant-funded position, right? That's separate.
Behavioral specialists are just what they say. They will be working directly with children and teachers and others to develop behavioral intervention plans, to help monitor those, to help connect with interagency collaboration if there's somebody who needs a service or a support that we can't provide. But how do we have a person in a building that can help with some ongoing behavioral challenges? All of which shouldn't be driven by, or dealt with by suspension, but rather, how do we help the children find success in schools? And what does that look like, thus reducing suspension, hopefully reducing frustration in classrooms by teachers and other students and that type of place? So we are looking at data where we have some of our greatest needs.
Right. Now, is that part of a phase in? I guess my question is, do you feel that three is enough? Or is there a goal that we're trying to reach? Because I completely, as you know, agree.
Three is not enough, but I don't think it needs to be a one-for-one for schools. These are going to be elementary positions. But we're targeting three of our elementary schools that have some of the greatest needs based on data, conversations with the principals and teachers in those schools. And so we, I'd rather roll it out in a way where we make sure we launch it successfully and it's sustainable, rather than do a whole lot, and then we try to figure out how it works. Many, many years ago, Norfolk used to have a position known as a building program specialist. And BPSs was the acronym for them. And they served in somewhat in this role. And that's what we are thinking, what I'm hoping to resurrect, but in a contemporary fashion in terms of supporting schools. But they are not disciplinarians. They are not, they won't be deans, but rather, they are in there with direct intervention, will need a specialized experience and training set in order to be successful with that. But that's what we're trying to return to for schools where it's needed.
Right, I'm happy to hear that. My next question is in regards to funding to support facilities, maintenance, and capital needs. So we have in there to maintain the two million that we had in there this year, but in prior years, we had four million in there.
Per year.
What's that?
One year of four million. We had three million generally, and they gave us one year that you-
And they gave us one year of four. And then this year?
The year they gave us four, in our operating budget, we had a million dollars in our budget to go towards capital needs. As a balancing effort a couple of years ago was a shell game to reduce that million dollars out of our operating budget and to give us a million dollar extra in capital. So we had the same dollars, just a different funding bucket.
Okay, okay.
But I think, again, in the last response to Ms. Doyle's question, Rhonda and Pearl both talked about what were some funds we're putting in and looking at about another million and a half.
Okay.
Overall, that we're going to try to support. Is that the correct figure? That last figure that you gave?
The one point seven million.
One point seven, right, increase.
Increase on top of the? Not an increase, it's only an increase of four hundred thousand.
It's a four hundred. Currently, it's one point three in the budget for facilities and then another four hundred thousand in nineteen.
And this is operating, not-
This is operating, not the capital.
Yeah, the two million that-
City brings.
That's the CIP, yes.
Right.
Okay, that's it for this page.
Ms. Wagner?
The behavior specialist, and will they be floating from school to school?
No, they would be dedicated to a school.
Just to those specific schools? And they will be working in conjunction with the wraparound services?
If those are needed, if that's a system of support that's needed, but initially would be working with teachers and parents and others to develop behavioral intervention plans, assess what a student's needs are, and if we find that an outside resource is also needed to support, then we would seek that.
Can we, getting to the facilities, maintenance, and capital needs, can we get a list of the, what the needs are with priorities?
Well, truthfully, I refer you back to the facilities condition index. The report from Corporate Strategies and HBA, where we did the multi-page, and that each building has a condition, and it talks about the systems that are there. We will be coming back to the board again to talk about capital projects prioritization. You know, we're in the fifth of the five PPEA schools. And so now it's time for the board to refresh its capital priorities going forward. But as Rhonda was saying, things such as the chillers that are going bad, roof leaks. But we do have some things, and I think the most recent list might be, didn't we post that with the facilities minutes at one point this year? But we'll look and see where we find that.
So and I guess with that, are we being too conservative in terms of what we're asking in the budget?
Oh, absolutely. We have one point four billion dollars in needs based on the facility index, but-
Billion.
Billion.
Yeah, let's be clear.
Yeah, billion, billion, with a B. And that's certainly, we know that's not going to happen. But we're just trying to get some movement because last year, we didn't get any movement on that at all.
Okay, I guess my thing is said, but I know we won't get a billion, but certainly that's what our needs, this just seems like it's so conservative in terms of what we really need.
Oh, I don't disagree. And that's why I said, the other conversation is going to come when we talk about setting priorities around our capital needs and, again, asking the city what we need. I mean, we've been very clear what our needs are. We spent a half, over a half million dollars, roughly a half million dollars at Bogota T last summer. We were told that we would get some support. We haven't gotten a dime of support for the infrastructure work that we did at Bogota T last summer. We actually, this year, built into our budget snow removal costs because respectfully, and I understand, the city doesn't have the capacity to support snow removal in our fifty sites. And so that becomes a problem with us getting ready to reopen schools. So we're taking over some things that the city has historically supposed to have been providing, and so they need to meet us with some other places because of the things we've taken off their plates.
And getting back to the capital needs, when we look at, I guess, CTE and the merging of the programs in the schools, is that going to be enough to make the renovations or things that need-
No, no, that has nothing to do, this is just maintenance.
Just the maintenance.
This is facilities maintenance. If we have roof leaks, boilers that go down, that type of thing.
The two million.
But the capital project would be what we'll talk about, what the facility needs would look like for a CTE or other schools.
Okay, so we'll come back to that. And getting back to the textbooks, can we, do we do textbooks online or do we just do the physical?
Currently, most textbook adoptions have an online asset or component with it. But as I was saying earlier, with the technology expansion, until we finish improving our infrastructure, we don't think it's fair to say students have to do everything through online, and they may not have that capacity. So we make available to schools those pieces that can be accessed online in addition to the hard copy of the book.
Oh, I guess I was just wondering, could we like, could we divide it, which would reduce the hard copy cost and maybe have some that's available? Because some students may want to do it online.
Right, well, some of those, we have access to, depending on the publisher. And the way in which we do the adoption, some of those have online components with it.
And we do have that availability.
Is that it for now? Ms. Wagner?
I'm good for that page, I hope.
Dr. Gabriel?
Okay, so for this page, I'm just going to go back again to the behavioral intervention positions. Those are positions, they'll have some type of like a licensed, what?
They're not like the ABAs that you're used to for students for autism, no. But these will be teachers that have additional training and background in supporting students and children with behavioral concern.
Okay. And with the extra positions that will be used for the in-house suspension, those individuals, will those individuals also be teachers or will they be something different?
Looking at Mr. Phillips, they don't have to be teachers.
Okay.
In-school suspension positions don't have to be teachers, correct? Mr. Phillips, right. And so it could be a combination depending on what the school wants to do. But we're basing this, I think, on paraprofessional, the budget is based on paraprofessional salary scale.
Okay. All right, I think, all the other questions I have are asked.
Anyone else on this particular page? Hearing, I'll just echo, I think as a board, we have to, at the next work session, have a conversation about the facilities maintenance piece of it. And I guess maybe we'll touch on it going forward. But under that technology piece, one of the areas that we've talked about is the research capacity and the technology support for the research capacity. You know, we continue to ask for reports and trying to look at data. I know we were in that transition for one system to another system or multiple systems to other systems. So I do think that something that I like for us to talk about additionally is, you know, the level of support. How comfortable are we with the level of support with, in that research? you know, the level of support, how, how comfortable are we with the level of support with, in, in that research area? Ms. Basine, you want to?
Yeah, I had another comment related to this. So, you know, as you, as you just mentioned, you know, ABA trained specialist, do you, are you your team finding a need that, is that something that we should consider to, or, or any other position for our students with disabilities?
Students, the teaching positions that we're maintaining and are within, we're looking to maintain our current support system for special education. You know, a lot of those positions are in the Title VI grant also. So we certainly can navigate within existing positions if we need to, to do some shifts based on the students who are being served. But we are, no, we don't have any proposal to add this year.
Okay.
So I know there's a lot of additional pieces in here looking at the comparison of the Governor, House and Senate budget. But if you're okay, I would say if we switch, go ahead to page 16 that deals with additionally what the proposal supports as far as compensation and so forth. We've touched on some of those already, but if we can pause there for a minute and see if there are any. In the bottom right-hand corner?
16.
Oh, there it is. Couldn't see it. Oh, okay, alright.
Came through real light.
So it says at the top, this proposal supports and begins with compensation and benefits. Ms. Wagner?
I don't know if this will come on this page, but I'm looking at health insurance premium increase. Compensation benefits. So we have a premium increase for, for, I guess my question is, we're asked, we're giving the pay, a pay increase to teachers. And I know that sometimes in the past, sometimes when we got an increase in pay, depending on the percentage point, if there was an increase coming from the state in the medical benefits, then we would never see the increase in pay. Is that going to be deducted from the?
When it said, when, when Rhonda said that the health insurance premium increase to be shared between the employer and the employee. The increase this year is scheduled to be a very low increase. You know, we've been close to double-digit increases for years, only 2%. So that increase would be nominal in terms of impact on employees and the district, we have to pay. One of our structural imbalances that we have not been able to resolve and it continues to be one of my frustrations with the Health Insurance Consortium that we are currently a part of, and I will be reviewing very closely going forward as to where we are with that consortium. But is, one of our structural imbalances is created by exactly what you just described, Ms. Wagner. When we were having some of those huge increases in health insurance costs and it may not have been any increases of any measure to, to staff, we did absorb all of that. And, but what we didn't do, so, so let's say we had a seven or 10% health insurance increase. We covered the entire amount, the employee share and the employer's share. And as a result, the employees didn't feel it, but it hit our budget really hard. Going forward and one, but what, let me also say what didn't happen was that we never went in and adjusted the contribution levels for the various plans that our employees pay. So when you look at the three members of the Norfolk Insurance, Health Insurance Consortium, which is the city of Norfolk, NRHA and NPS, in which by the way, we are the largest participant in that group, we pay a greater share currently of the employee cost of health insurance. And we are way out of line with what the other two members of the consortium are doing. I've been trying to get them for two years to bring to me a defined contribution model, meaning it, it becomes a cafeteria model, we'll give X number of dollars and it's up to the employees to select the plans that best fit them, knowing what their contribution level would be. I haven't gotten that yet, which again, be part of my frustration as it relates to the Health Insurance Consortium. Because we have to address that other piece. We are paying way more than anybody else in this region in terms of the employee share. And we just can't continue to, to absorb it. That's why this year with a, only a 2% increase, that, that will be a very nominal piece. And hopefully then I can move into this place of this defined contribution model where employees can select what they want from the options, knowing what the contribution is going to be and they can make that informed decision. But what we currently have is not sustainable. That's one of our structural imbalances.
As an employer, at one point, we received a 2% raise and then of course, the insurance went up. And when you get, when I looked at my check, I had, I lost $30 from a 2%, I would hate to see that continue to happen.
I, I understand. So in this, we'd be splitting 2%, so.
Well, and can I pivot off of that? Because some of the teacher increases, the average would be between 1 and 4% or add been 1 to 3.6. So if they're paying one and only getting one, to Ms. Wagner's point, we just want to make sure that it's not a net loss for anybody.
Exactly. That's what we're trying to work toward.
Because it became a.
But if we absorb, what would be that figure? I'll ask Rhonda and Pearl, what would be that figure if we absorb? What would we have to add to the budget if we absorb 100% of the health insurance cost?
It will be double, what, on, what pages are on? We had an amount in the back that says what the, our share of cost was. Health insurance was .8, $800,000. So if we absorbed, it'd be another $800,000.
It'll be 1.6 million dollars that we would have to add to this budget. But it doesn't.
800,000.
You know, in, in the current world of insurance management and, and this is tough. We've been extremely generous and I'm, I'm not trying to pull that out from folks. But if we're going to do some other things, knowing that the amount of money we're receiving, the state is still down, the federal government is in flux with grants. And you know, the city's growth, I think, hasn't been as great as they had hoped also. So we're not knowing that. If we have to absorb another 800,000, then we're going to have to take 800,000 somewhere else.
Well, I was just thinking about us in, in terms of being competitive with other.
Well, when it comes to insurance.
Well, in, you know, competitive in terms of, of, of income. And when you're seeing that you're having a deficit in pay.
Right, well, at this point, I, I would hate to characterize it as a significant deficit because again, you know, that percent increase doesn't take away a great deal. Like you said, $30 means a lot to, to folks and I get that. I too participate in the health insurance and pay my portion. The board doesn't pay my insurance. So I, I, I deal with, with that also. But one of the challenges, when you look at what we currently provide, even with that 2%, we are much more generous than any other school district in this region. And most private sector employers too. And like I said, even within the consortium, we have a problem because the percentage that, and the amounts that the city of Norfolk and NRHA employees pay is much more than what our folks pay.
And, and with it being 2%, you know, if your monthly insurance payment is $50, 2% of $50 is $1 increase. So because the increase this year is so low, that percentage on what an employee would pay on their share is, will be minimal this year if, you know, be differently if we had double-digit numbers of an increase.
That would get exactly to the scenarios that, that you all are referencing, that all 100% of your increase is eaten up by your health insurance costs. But because it's, it's a 2% increase this year, this is the year for us to do it. Like I said, it would have been my goal this year to move to a defined contribution model for this. And it's not happening for me, so the earliest it can happen now would be FY19. Because as I've said to the consortium before, because of the way in which we have to do contracts and put out a budget and have that all done by June 30th, you can't suddenly add, tack on all of these things in August or September for open enrollment in October, November and starting in, in January. So I need a year's lead time. So I've met with the consultant, I've met, had the messages with the consortium and can't seem to get folks on the same page with us, so. I have to consider what's best for us going forward.
Dr. Robson, you want to comment on this?
That was the point, a 1% pay increase and a 1% health insurance premium increase is not the same.
I know.
It's not one for one.
I know.
Just wanted to make sure. And I believe, Ms. Wagner, that year that we gave the 2% raise and the, the income went down was because the, the social security tax changes occurred at that time. It wasn't because of the health insurance cost. President Obama reinstituted, there was a sunset on a social security, on FICA. And it went back into, into play and it took more money out of the, out of the individual's paycheck. Because it happened to my staff too.
But this was before Obama.
Yeah, I think before it weren't any increases at all, so it was kind of like.
There was a small increase, but then there was a decrease.
We can, I don't recall, because we had looked at this a year or so ago in terms of what had gone on. But we probably haven't passed on any insurance increases to staff in at least eight years. At least eight. And that's, that's part of our budget challenge. And this is one of those battles that I face when I'm dealing with the city in terms of what revenue we need. The first thing they throw back at us, well, you haven't fixed your insurance piece. You would have more income if you had your employees paying more. And I go through this whole spiel about what's different in our employee pool. And there's a defined and, and recognized teacher shortage, all of this piece. So we're, we're trying to create that balance. That's why I say going forward, I'm just not sure the consortium is the way for us.
Ms. Wagner, anything else on this page for now?
No, no, that's fine for that page.
Others on this, on, on page 16? Dr. Gabriel?
Dr. Boone, can you elaborate a little bit more on the incentives for hard-to-staff schools?
Yes, as you all know, when we present the personnel docket and we'll often talk about, we'll see transitions and how you'll ask and we'll provide how many long-term subs in, in schools. And so we do have roughly a handful of schools that have a difficult time staffing those schools. And we've also talked about how do we get an experienced level into some of our most challenged schools that would help accelerate student achievement and progress. And so the thought with incentives is for staff who are in those schools and staff who are hired for those schools would receive an additional point of compensation for committing to, to work in some of our difficult-to-staff schools. And we would be looking for more than an annual commitment for that.
It would take care of the teachers who are already in the building and then the ones that would come to the building.
So that would be the retention piece for those who are currently there. And the recruitment piece for those who aren't there. But again, certainly looking to, to get some experience in those schools. Nothing against our novice teachers, because some of them are knocking it out the park. I mean, they're doing great jobs. And, but sometimes we need a veteran to, that can help in that overall climate. How do you move an instructional program? How do you do all of that? And there's some places for, some critical places for veteran teachers.
Was that, was that a percentage point when you said that increase? For clarification purposes?
It's, it's going to probably be a dollar amount.
Oh, a flat, okay.
Yeah, a flat amount.
Okay. I, you said point, I thought meant a percentage point.
No, no.
No, okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Dr. Gabriel, anything else for now? Ms. Doyle?
That was my question.
Okay.
Same here.
Others? Uh, just a couple of things and, Remy, what did you have anything? One, I don't, I don't, you know, I felt when we did the phase one of the pay and compensation study last year that it, the significance of that wasn't fully appreciated. In the general public, I mean. And so I'm, I think the work that you're doing here or that you're recommending for us to consider with the phase two on top of these other competitive salary pieces from starting pay substitute, bus drivers, hard-to-staff, I mean, I just think that is outstanding recommendation. The one question I had, last year, you were considering substitute management? And, and you're not considering that again this year?
We can't afford it and as we've done more research, there, there are some concerns about the long-term support and quality and sustainability.
So you're still looking at that then?
We're, we're still looking at that, but we aren't building it in this year. So that's, you know, what can we do to help our pool?
Okay, so if we flip over to the next page, additional staffing changes, technology, we've talked quite a bit about building repairs and maintenance. Any questions or comments for now on this, on this page?
Next page.
I had a question regarding the preschool. Can you describe a little bit about, when you go back to the state budget, there's a decrease of VPI slots of 105 in the senate budget, but that yet they would increase funding per slot. Okay. Tell me a little bit more about this second sub-bullet here. Preschool classes to support non-state funded local option?
So with the 105 student reduction, we would lose six classes.
Right.
We're proposing to restore three classes, not state-funded. Would be 100% locally funded and probably a sliding scale tuition fee for participating in our preschool. Such that then we could move toward having greater mixed-income, socio-economically diverse preschools. We only want to go with three because as we look at our demographics where we've had decline in enrollment and the birth rates are now impacting our kindergarten classes over the last couple of years and some challenges and filling some pre-K classes, smaller groups of students, we felt it wasn't wise to try to do six initially, but let's do three and see what the interest is, what, what the support of that is. So this is, we will still use the curriculum, the staffing levels, the maximum class sizes and things as we do with our VPI and VPI plus and the assessments and all of that. But again, but these would be designed to be more socio-economically diverse preschool classes.
I think that's great. And when you mentioned sliding scale tuition fee, good for you. I think that's great. And we've been talking about that for years, so I'm thrilled that we want to try that next year.
Have you identified, excuse me, have you identified where you're going to place those?
No. And then one more question on this page. Define for me your medical advisor and why you think there's a void gap and what is your intention?
When nurses were under the health department, there is a physician who provides that medical support and making sure, approving prescriptions and other things that students present that, so that nurses can do certain procedures and things based on a prescription from a doctor within their, their requirements. We don't have that now that we're, all of the nurses are NPS employees. This is not unusual. We, it should have been planned for when the nurses transitioned to us. Nurses technically work under physician's license.
They do, exactly.
And so we don't have a physician's license. So that's what we are looking for in this part-time position. Is, it usually, my experience has been, it doesn't require a lot of onsite time. They work closely with the nursing supervisors, some meetings and things when the nurses have meetings and things. But they are that go-to person that should, we have those medical questions that require a physician's intervention or commentary.
Are we out of compliance and not having them work under a physician today? Well, would, would we employ a physician, I would say, or would we contract with a physician? I mean, how would that work?
We would be contract.
Okay.
We would contract. In Worcester, when I did it, we had a contract with the medical school.
Gotcha.
And so we paid it to the medical school and that person came. So there are different ways that we could do that.
Okay.
But, yeah.
There's different models to approach.
But, but it's not requiring us to have a physician on staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Basine and Ms. Wagner?
So the staffing reductions, are you seeing, or are you, do you have any projections yet as to? I know there's largely the long-term substitutes, but not any specific class of teachers, right?
No, the elementary, I think.
Elementary, right.
Primarily elementary.
Primarily elementary.
And again, this goes with the birth rate declines. You know, our larger classes, I think, I'm looking over at Dr. Bill, about eighth grade is our lar, we're our largest. And so now we, a smaller class is behind the eighth grade.
Okay, so, and that's the second part of that that you just touched on. So just, just for our information purposes, to reduce a class size is about how much? By one, by one student, like just roughly, like what is that?
She's looking it up, she has it.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious about that. Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious about that.
Put that as a note that we can.
We put that as a note, yeah.
That we can get.
But I'll, I'll move on, um, the athletic trainer. So, last year, we talked about this as part of the budget as we were phasing out. Can you remind again? So, we, we never actually phased in last year, the athletic trainer?
We have been phasing over the last couple of years.
Okay, so.
It's, we have one athletic trainer per school, per high school that had been supported through the Old Dominion, uh, Sports Medicine Program. They are shifting their program to be a doctoral level program, so that level of support is not available to us. So, that's why annually, we have been trying to build in. The original request would've been to do all five and we couldn't. So, but we're just now at this point where we're getting toward the end of the Old Dominion program and so this continues.
Okay, so I got it. So, our goal is to get to the five and so we're phasing.
We need more than that because, you know, again, they support middle schools, but we, we, they are now our employees.
Yeah.
So, um, so, so we get to assign them and support their schedule that way.
Okay, and then if I understood correctly, the public relations position that is to fill this, a vacancy?
There will be a vacancy and, uh, communications. Dr. Legrand has asked to restructure her department and take that posi, not continue that position as it was initially and to split it in two with, and the salary that's there plus a, a little bit of additional would allow that to serve two positions rather than one.
Okay.
Uh, Reverend Haywood, then I'll come back to Ms. Wagner.
I think I've, my, my question was answered.
Ms. Wagner?
Okay, and I know that we have on the other page where we talked about, CTE is part of the discussion that you haven't dealt with yet, but I'm looking at staffing changing, changes. Um, and I'm still back to, and maybe this is just a question that we can put on for the future. When we've merged the two schools, and I know we haven't voted on that yet, would it be dual administration?
What's your definition of merge? I'm, I'm, I'm not.
Maybe merge is not it, when we put the two schools, the CTE and the School of the Arts together?
So, no, so the comprehensive CTE school would have one leadership team. And there would be leadership around the various, you know, like you have a building principal and, and the leadership around the four pathways and the arts being the fifth pathways, you know, when we're, if that's where we finally are. There's a place, the, the, because we would be at two campuses, whether at Bogota or Lake Taylor, there's still the leadership that's at NTC because we are not physically in one site. Comprehensive CTE schools generally have a career tech ed director or assistant principal type person that's on the staff that helps facilitate all of the requirements with that. So, if you'll go, I will have to go back to the presentation we did on CTE. I think we addressed a little bit of that. But, um, the CTE program is a comprehensive school, so all the same academics and everything goes on. So, there will be building leadership as a principal. Um, and then all of the support that we will put in place for the various academic and academy programs.
Okay, so to, I guess to, to get in my head, to answer the question, so there would be, so we wouldn't need additional staff for that? It would just be one principal and then a, a supporting?
We will need additional staff as we perhaps, based on enrollment and based on, um, what's needed within the various pathways and the academic programs to be able to support that. So, absolutely. Over time, there will be additional staff.
Okay, but, but the upcoming school year, I, I guess my thing, would there be two administrators? And would that be a part of the change in staffing?
Yes, there will be while we're on two campuses.
Oh, so it'll still be two campuses?
Because it's whatever high school, whether it's Bogota or Lake Taylor.
Oh, okay.
And NTC, because we don't have now one building yet. So, we still have to have an administrator at NTC. But that administrator will work very closely with the, the comprehensive school. Those faculties will begin to blend around professional development, meetings and all those things to build their capacity and that mindset that we're career-focused in this school through the work that we do. Academics is aligned to the, to the CTE and, and all of that. So, that will be where it, it will come together. But because we are, would be physically located at two different sites, we still have to have leadership at the other site.
Okay, and I guess I'm thinking that the, okay, and my thought process is, is somewhere different cause I'm thinking that it's written in stone that it's gonna be at one particular school and that's not it yet.
Well, I, I'm.
And that's why I was thinking that it was gonna be.
Wherever, I'm just saying, wherever it is, this is the model. So, if it's, be, starting off, if, at, at Bogota, as it's, as the CTE high school, the academic portion and some of the CTE would continue to occur at Bogota. The career tech ed piece would still continue to occur at NTC because we don't have the heavy labs and things that we need onsite. So, until a new facility is built, we're gonna, that's when you hear me in the presentation say we will be a dual campus, a shared campus, that's what I mean when I say dual campus. It's the core high school with the academic support, the arts, the, and CTE that's there paired with NTC. The pathway going forward, the only pathway into the Career Tech Center will be through this comprehensive CTE high school. So, over time, and when we get into a single facility, then the, the leadership structure will shift some. But the idea is that there's one principal, then there are the assistant principals to support things, perhaps a, a career tech ed director that will support the depth of that work. But that will be an internal shift, but we have to have leadership at the second site because all classes won't happen at one school.
Right, so at the last meeting, the board asked the administration to look at Bogota as that site. And so, they're off working with their teams, are gonna come back to us in April, I believe it is, for, uh, for the continuing update.
Okay, so it's just premature to think that it's there because?
No, it's not premature, but it's just not reflected here. But I have some of the same questions, so we'll, I think we'll talk about it some more, uh.
The way, if, if I can, the way in which we're thinking about it is, is not a, esteem doesn't become separate, but that's the only title we had for this budget presentation, is the direction that the board had given us in the fall.
Okay.
And back in December. So, the way in which we've been talking about internally administrative team, there are four career pathways within the comprehensive CTI, CTE high school. And when housed at Bogota, it would have a fifth academy, which would be the arts.
Okay, so it will, it will still be called Bogota, Washington High School?
As far as.
I'm just trying to get the program stood up, I don't care what you call it.
It's been no discussion of changing the name.
Please don't leave here saying that I have proposed to change the name of that school. I have not proposed any changes at Bogota, Washington High School through this budget with the exception of the addition of three teachers for the arts program expansion.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna move on, uh, Reverend Haywood, Dr. Gabriel? Okay, Dr. Gabriel?
All right, under transportation, uh, when Mr. Coleman had presented some of the findings of the special education, uh.
Specialty program.
The specialty programs group. Uh, one of the suggestions was transportation for the medical sciences program at Blair. Is that within the transportation?
It's not outlined specifically, but we're reviewing to see if we can accomplish, accommodate it within some of these other structural changes that are going on within transportation.
Okay.
I have one other question.
Wait, hold on one moment.
Oh, go ahead. No, I'm looking at staff and we've been talking about the, um, uh, grant writer. Is, are we still, is that still?
A part-time, a half-time position there, we haven't been able to fill it yet and something definitely that we need and, um, but with this budget, I, I don't have the luxury of, of making it a full-time position.
Dr. Gabriel?
That was the only question that I had for this page that hasn't already been asked.
So, just, Ms. Ingram?
Uh, we found the number, uh, with Ms. Bessine was asking, if I have it correctly, how much it is? If we decrease the PTR by one student, we have the number for the secondary level will require forty additional positions to the tune of two-point-four million dollars approximately.
Two-point-four for one, reduction of one.
At the secondary level.
At the secondary level.
The elementary kind of hard because the state give us eight million dollars to reduce the class sizes from in K through th- third grade. We already have lower class sizes at elementary, both through K-three, the class size initiative, we have certain caps. As well as district goals that we have and, and not to exceed and any additional teachers that come in through Title I.
Thank you.
So, we'll get, cause I don't wanna try to do all that now, but we know that's something that we will have some additional questions as we try to get the breakdown and understand, uh, grant funding, what's this and what's that? So, we know that's something we'll have some questions for you as we go to the next work session. Uh, so I just wanna open it up in general. Uh, any other comments right now on the, at, at a high level? On the recommendations, priorities, uh, balancing strategies? Anything in general right now that any board member would like to bring to our attention at, at this time? Dr. Gabriel?
I don't know if any of the other board members, um, need more clarification on the CTI funds, but I feel like I need another, um, review of the tax that was voted on. The monies that are going to go towards the debt collection for the building of the schools. And then there was a portion of that that was supposed to go into technology. I don't have to have that question answered now, I can do this on a small group setting, but if there are other board members that need to get a little bit more clarification on that, then I just wanted to put that out there. Cause that's an ongoing tax.
Yes, I think it'd be good as part of a refresher.
Absolutely. But the bottom line is the tax is collected.
Yeah.
So that it pays debt service on the five PPEA schools. Right, but it was designed for all three components, but typically the city controls the funding and they have put it all into the debt piece. Except one or two occasion, they have, um, allowed, I think it was one-point-nine million dollars one year to go towards technology. But we can go back to that.
Dr. Robinson?
I know this budget doesn't, uh, reflect this, but we're not able to consolidate any buildings, uh, not on. whatever, and, and so, I, what my question is, is when will we be receiving information to move that next piece forward?
As you recall, we said, once we present a budget, we will be coming back with a, with several recommendations. One dealt with the boundary changes for Camp Allen and Sewell's Point. Remember, we asked you to hold on that because that would be affected to the fall of twenty.
Correct.
But because we had some, uh, enrollment increases that we hadn't anticipated, so we wanna make sure we're doing those boundaries correctly, so we will be coming back this spring with those. We will also be coming back to the board where we had an initial recommendation for, uh, that involved Poplar Halls, Fairlon and Lake Taylor Middle. That too would be at the earliest, the fall of nineteen.
Fall of nineteen.
Fall of nineteen. So, even with those from the educational planning work and those that we had, um, brought to the board before, those were the ones that wouldn't have any impact for this coming fall, so no, they don't show up in this budget. They would be in FY twenty budget if we were able to accomplish those, yeah.
So, my, my question is, when will we receive that information?
April, remember I said, we're coming back to the board in April, this spring with the idea of vetting those and, uh, making some decisions on next steps.
Thank you.
And, and public comment on those and all of that, so we can, that's the goal, to have that done. Um, this spring, to finish that process for that portion of the air planning this spring and then, you know, go into other air planning aspects.
Probably the work session?
Yeah, April eleventh is the current target.
That's right, we're moving it because of spring break.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you for the clarification, I was just asking for clarification.
No, no, no problem.
I wasn't trying to question you, I was just trying to, I just wanted to be clear.
It's all good.
Dr. Gabriel?
The calendar hasn't changed, our commitment to when we're doing it hasn't changed.
Okay.
So, last year with our budget, from the local contribution, there was a total of three million in one-time funds.
Yes.
The budget that we.
And three million continuing.
And, and an addition of three million continuing. The budget that we are asking for this year is one-point-two percent higher or four million dollars more than last year. Does that take into account the three million one-time funds that we had last year?
We would need the one-time funds made permanent and additional.
The additional four.
The additional four. Okay.
And just for clarity, this is Dr. Boone's proposal to us.
That's right.
We will decide what we ultimately submit.
Okay, and then the other question, when we get into that bigger discussion of facility maintenance, the mobile units at the schools, um, do we, do we build those in the maintenance of those buildings? Because they kind of function as part of the buildings. When we say we're gonna reduce, um, our buildings, when we did the facility index study, we're, we didn't want to put them in as capacity and utilization. And so, are we gonna try to, um, bring more of those mobile units offline?
That's dependent upon enrollment and where we are. So, we're still about a year out from taking, uh, mobile units offline because any consolidation of buildings or anything like that is at least a year out.
Right.
So, that's when we would be able to see that happening. What we have tried to do this year is replace some of our older mobile units that weren't in good condition with some of those that were placed at Berkeley Camp Estella when Camp Estella was there. So, we have done some replacement of some, some older building, mobile's not in, in the best of condition. But actually, you remember when we talked about the Sewell's Point, Camp Allen one? That in one of the projections for the boundaries, we would be able to take mobile units offline at, at, um, Sewell's Point. So, that's the kind of thing that we're still working on and coming back to you with. We had to go back and recheck our enrollment, um, assumptions, given the fact that Camp Allen was up some this year.
Right, I just didn't want there to be this false perception that, you know, all our, our elementary schools are at capacity and that is with, s- some of the schools have entire grade levels in mobile units.
Ocean Air is one that has a very comprehensive mobile unit.
They have a village. So, uh, so when we, when we talk about bringing schools offline, many of our schools are above and over capacity when you bring in the mobile unit factor.
You have something on that or something?
Yeah, follow-up to, back to the, uh, the facility study that we're gonna get in April. And you, you.
No, boundary, air planning boundaries. Facility study, we've already done, we've already given the condition index, we gotta have a capital conversation.
The priority.
Right, okay, on capital projects, yeah.
Prioritization, is that gonna be multi-year or is it just gonna be, uh, an initial?
Well, that's gonna be a discussion, we'll, I think what we, what we need to do as a governance team is take now that, uh, FCI report, the facility condition index report and have a discussion about where we think we should go next and then put that into a multi-year.
I was gonna say, is that, is, is Mr. Richter's, uh, company going to present something for us to consider at that time?
We, we've given you the infrastructure. So, you know, we, we, excuse me, we vetted those. Those are, you can find them in, um, placed in a couple of different ways. One, you see, uh, needs by elementary, middle and high. The other ones, we've done by, um, FCI score.
Right.
From, so, so those are ways in which we can look at and decide where do we wanna go. There, like you said, uh, the recommendations for a couple of places might take a building offline, which would then would take that out of that consideration and then move another school into that place.
I guess we, cause we have to also consider the demographics of the different parts of the city and where the growth is and where the, the reduction in number of students, so when we make those kind of decisions.
Unfortunately, at the elementary level, we aren't seeing wholesale, um, declines enough to take a building offline. Cause that was one of the, the assumptions that we went into this with, could we take any elementary buildings offline in terms of enrollment and enrollment is not driving taking any off. Now, you know, down the road and in the future, as the St. Paul's project is undertaken, we certainly will have to talk the future of, uh, PB Young and Ty Water Park based on, um, you know, what enrollment will look like. And we will be monitoring that enrollment very closely. We, we keep being told that any formal action is probably two years out before we will see any movement, but we're certainly monitoring where students are moving from now in the event that families are opting out of those areas ahead of the formal projects and programs.
I think I was, Dr. Gabriel, you finished for now?
I just have a question that everybody else probably knows, I just didn't know. Um, the buildings that we had that are vacant, um, Rob, uh, Rob. The buildings that we had that are vacant, Rogers Park and-
Yeah, we turned those over to the city.
So when you turned those over to the city, do we get any kind of compensation for them? We just give it to, okay. I just, I just wanted to-
Under the current approach.
Right, under the current approach.
Reverend Haywood?
That number of 555 decrease in student enrollment, that's quite high. And yet, we see enrollment increases in other places. Is that number, you expecting that number to change?
Actually, it's a little bit lower than what it has been in some previous years because we had been in the 600s. So we're beginning to see a little slowing of the decline, the enrollment decreases. This entire region is slowing in terms of enrollment. Chesapeake is still growing, but not at the rate that it had. Suffolk was one of the fastest growing districts. They're still growing, but still not at a rate that they had been growing. Virginia Beach actually talks about a little bit of an enrollment decline. So it's a little bit of what we're experiencing regionally. You know, I'm concerned, you know, once the St. Paul's piece is fully in place, what that will look like, because there are over 2,000 children in that community, in those communities. And so-
One other point. I noted that the bus attendants, you're attempting to move the bus attendants from a part-time status to a full-time status. I'm glad to see that the administration is addressing that. I'm assuming that you're addressing that to bring stability in terms of employment. But I think that, you know, the bus attendants have spoken to us before in the past about their own financial instability because of that part-time piece in which they're really very lowly, low-paid. So with that full-time position will come the benefits and all of that that accrue to full-time position. So I'm glad to see that. What, what pushed you in that direction? Were you hearing from the bus attendants or?
Well, yes. I mean, you know, we've heard from them, but as part of our pay and comp, we looked at what are the challenges within our current compensation packages. And when we look at the HR data and the department data in terms of ability to retain employees, the ability to attract employees that will stay with us sometime, we had to start addressing. And that's why last year, when I presented to the board Phase 1 of the pay and comp study, I made a very strong recommendation that we not split employee groups in addressing the pay and comp, because somebody gets left behind and the catch-up never occurs. And so even this year, it's Phase 2. Once again, I'm asking for support for all employee groups in order to begin to, to address some of those gaps going forward. The salaries are still not where they should be, even with the making positions full-time and the adjustments we're making with, with the scale and, and the steps. But again, that's one of those things where we've asked the state as superintendent's groups to change the number of positions and to take off that cap of support positions that they include in the standards of quality positions, those SOQ-funded positions. Because when they do that, then we, we're struggling as districts to do the enhancements that we need to do for those support positions that are so critically needed. And so that doesn't seem to, didn't seem to carry again this year. But that's one of the things superintendents will continue to fight for.
Ms. Doyle?
I know that in order to balance the budget, even with the increase to the 4 million, there were decreases that are noted here on page 25. How did the division go about looking at general efficiencies in the budget to say, we can do less this year in this area? So that we could, you know, we're asking for more. But did we also look at where is it we can cut within the division and be more efficient with what we're doing, just as any good organization would?
Perfect example, that's the transportation example, where we bought in, we needed, we thought we needed certain capacity to support preschool transportation. When we actually started running the preschool transportation and now we have some additional reductions anticipated, you know, transportation says, we can create some efficiencies there and do some other things within transportation. So that's exact, that's a perfect example of how we did that. Same thing with how we're leveraging the E-rate. You know, what can we get out of it? Because when we use E-rate, we can buy it at such a cheaper price point that we can cover more schools. And so that's what, those are the types of things we're trying to do efficiency-wise. You all know that we're undertaking some reviews in several of our operational areas. And so we'll look forward to later this year, some, some recommendations around those that we may employ for the next budget cycle. Could be up and could be down. Could be efficiencies as well as increases.
Yeah.
But we're examining that just as we've done within our academic programs and supports.
I think it's just important for the community to hear that, that we're just not asking more to do more.
Oh, no.
But that we're looking at how we can be more efficient with what we have.
Exactly. And that's why, that's what made last year such a tough budget year, when we had to talk about some rightsizing with the SOQ positions, because we always went to the classroom positions and seldom looked at the resources that supported it. It was painful. It was tough. It was something I didn't want to do. But I feel we're in a much better place. You don't see those types of recommendations this year. So we feel that we're at a minimal capacity, minimal, intentionally spoken, minimal capacity. And we can now say what our growth needs are.
Yeah.
Because we've done some rightsizing, growth now linked to certain programs, or specialty schools, or whatever else, or things that we're trying to accomplish, and not just willy-nilly. So.
Ms. Bassin?
So you just touched on a question that I had about, with the, with efficiencies and the reviews that may be in place. And I know last year, we talked about this and I had asked, in terms of a special education review as well as a gifted education review. And are those the reviews that you're talking about now? Or is that something that-
Operations, facilities, transportation, finance.
Okay.
So we're on that side. Federal program monitoring has been underway in the district with the state. So that will give us a level of review.
Okay.
That, that we will, you know, discuss with the board once those are finalized. And then, again, but things such as reviews for gifted, we may not need big dollars in order to do that. So we didn't flag that here. Doesn't mean we're ignoring that. But knowing that federal program monitoring for our Title I, Special Education, Title II, is that those were underway this year at the state level. And so that will be a first level of review for us. So-
So, but in, for special education in particular, is there, does a, does a state-level review provide that in-depth review we may want?
They, they, they get to a lot of what we want. So that's why I say, let's see. Because they revised that process, before it used to be purely a compliance process.
Right.
So now that is more than compliance, it's also quality, results, outcomes, then. So we, we get closer to, I think, what most districts would like.
Okay. And then my, the other question was around transportation. So you talked about transportation efficiencies and looking at that. But my question is around, you know, what drives the costs in transportation? And could we also be looking at partnerships like with HRT, like other ways of further, maybe either shifting the costs or-
I'm just smiling.
Or reducing bus routes, you know?
Budgetarily, I think we're doing a little bit better than HRT, but I won't cast your shade.
Yes, you didn't hear that.
But, but, but to your question, that has, that has come up before, and I've even addressed it in some public settings. I remember years and years ago, Hampton City School students used to use what was then Penn Tran. So I'm dating myself for all who know Penn Tran.
That is, you are dating yourself.
But the, the, over time, that wasn't, there were some challenges with that. We're certainly, we continue to partner with HRT in ways in which we can support travel and transportation to schools. I'm not at a place where I would say we substitute a large portion of our transportation needs to, to HRT. I don't, I'm, I'm not there with us. No.
Okay.
You know, many districts will outsource transportation with a goal of saving money. Been in that system too, but we still had transportation. And savings aren't necessarily there, but they face the same challenges we do because those employees aren't district employees. And so the, the ability to retain drivers and attract drivers and all of that is, is something that goes on. I mean, we certainly, and we were just having a conversation earlier today, but we certainly need to look at all of our costs associated with transportation. And this review is going to help us think about ways in which we consider any efficiencies, any enhancements through best practices and other things that could support us in containing costs. Our aging fleet, though, is a reality.
Dr. Robinson?
I've got three comments about that. I'm still waiting for the MOU that was promised us back in six years ago, concerning how the city was going to replace our buses, which I don't think we'll ever get. But the other thing is, we talked, as a budget-cutting or budget-reduction measure, we, we talked about outsourcing buses. But then one of the, one of the issues was not just the retention and that, but the ability to provide transportation changes at a moment's notice.
You can't.
You can't do that when you outsource it. That's one of the main reasons why we kept it in-house.
And you have to plan and build in costs for field trips and that type of thing. So every trip that they run has a cost to it. And like I said, in Worcester, we had, we did a lot, most of our special education transportation, except those buses that needed the wheelchair lifts. Those buses were so expensive, so we didn't have those. So that's the only way we had some flexibility was because we had some buses of our own. But again, in order to do what you were saying, you have to really build that into the contract and the costs associated with that really.
Check that out. The other thing that, talking about audits and reviews, you didn't mention anything about in 2018, your implementation of the alternative education.
Yes, we did. The in-school suspension piece.
Okay.
And the behavioral specialists.
Okay. Any of the programming?
No. Well, again, the, there were areas that were cost-neutral as it related to making sure that teachers and staff were part, fully engaged with the professional development, making sure the instructional resources were there. That work has been ongoing.
Okay.
But the larger recommendations around expansion of the elementary alternative option is, is not here yet. Is Madison in the right place? And can we do program expansions around that? And so we haven't had the movement that we were anticipating with those facilities. So not there yet.
It's just not on the front burner right now, just because of other, because of where we're at facility-wise too. I understand that. I just, when we started talking about that, it just popped up in my mind, other than the in-school suspension piece. So thank you.
And with these other strategies, we may not need, I mean, the expansion, you know?
Ms. Wagner?
I just, one observation. In light of what happened in Florida, do we, have we assessed it? Or do we need any additional kinds of security for our schools?
We've had those conversations, obviously, and continue to have those. One of the, the safety pieces that we have in place, of course, is that all of our schools, you have to be buzzed in. There are some schools in this area, I think you saw Virginia Beach is looking to propose that. They didn't have that in place. So we have those pieces. Obviously, training and support continues. The police department is a good support for us with our school resource officers. So some of the things that some school districts may not have, we have in place. And we, we actually did this conversation with the team and said, you know, we aren't saying that there aren't more things that we could do, but there was core infrastructure pieces, having security officers in our, particularly our middle and high schools. We don't have them at most of our elementary schools. We have a couple of sites. Having SROs, school resource officers, at our middle and high schools, those are in place. The, the building access being buzzed in, not just open and free access. So we continue to, to look and see, you know, what are the other enhancements? We have talked about, are there additional training enhancements for our security offices? And the conversations that we have with the police department, with our school resource officers, and things that we can do to enhance. We certainly do drills. We do practice activities currently. I will speak it here, it may not be popular, but I am not in favor of arming teachers. When that bill came up last year, not related to any particular incident, but I, I said that then, and I will say, go on record again tonight, that I am not in favor of arming teachers as part of a school security protocol.
So you think that probably the elementary schools are the most vulnerable ones because they don't have the SROs or?
No, vulnerability, no. We have, SROs, they are not vulnerable.
I'm not saying she said it. I'm asking the question.
No, I, I don't think that at all. The elementary schools are smaller.
Mm-hmm.
Kids are younger. Doesn't mean that you don't have challenges. But the size of elementary schools makes those more manageable. Our larger K8s that have come on board, we have put security there to support, just simply because they are running roughly 1,000 students. So that's about the numbers of students, not from, from outside entities. But we have on-call, so on a moment's notice, we can have people dispatched to support. That was the reason last year, I asked the board to support the position of Directive School Safety and Security, Mr. Walker's position. Now, because how are we planning for school safety and not just reacting? So these are the plans and things we put in place. Certainly, our, our strong conversations with our partners, for example, this year, even with weather or threats in the community, Mr. Walker is right there on it. And so we've had conference calls that NRHA or other entities, police or others are part of the conference call to help us prepare and address any potential safety issues for us to be proactive. So putting that piece in place along with what we had is, is improving, has improved our overall school safety. We will continue with what's the right level of training and additional training we may want to bring to all of our staff around that. But that's what we're working on.
Okay. FYI, there have been shootings in elementary schools also. So I think, I want, I think to hear that is good, to see, to hear what we're doing and putting in place for that also. That's good.
So I had just a few things, they're not questions, but some thoughts of what I'll be, just some thoughts I have. One, on the revenue sharing formula that now has kind of set out there for a year. I think I'm going to recommend that we talk about how we can just take some lead on that and as part of our budget submission, maybe push the envelope a little more where that's concerned.
Well, there's a statement in the budget document. No, I mean, I was just saying, as, as, as you think about it, that talks about, we still are in this annual negotiation. So I think that's the, that's a springboard to what you're saying also.
Because I remember we had this hypothetical number and that we feared might become the real number. And I just feel like we've got to get this thing moving if we're going to do it, or just stop talking about it and we're going to stay in this process that we're in. But I think we need to build, go deeper with that.
Great statement in your letter.
The other thing, related to the additional elementary in-school suspension monitors, I know it was a, described as a model based upon the size of the school.
Yes.
Which, to me, I mean, you all are experts on that. But, you know, if a school is smaller but has the need, then just trying to meet the need based upon the, the need, not necessarily based upon enrollment was a thought.
Most of our schools, though, that have that need are in that 500-plus. So that's 14 covered.
And then, and then the other thing is, you know, we did spend a lot of time discussing our specialty programs and some recommendations that we discussed, guess at our retreat, as well as an update that we got from Mr. Coleman. So whether or not there's some things that we could push, I mean, obviously, you gave us a balanced budget. But I think just kind of fitting with the priority of trying to meet the demand that we have out there, that maybe that's something we can give some, some additional.
Like I said, we have the arts piece. We have, we're looking at that transportation piece for the Blair piece.
But I think, I think you've done a very good job, great job, with trying to address the competitive- the competitiveness of, for our employees and, and compensation. But I guess generally speaking, then we do have our work session next week. I know everybody's going to go back and dig through this some more. So first I have a question and I have a recommendation for us in terms of our process. So is there going to be an additional detailed document that we're going to receive
Yes.
prior to the work session?
The binders. Aren't they here? Are they here?
This, I'll get it.
Yeah, we, we have like.
Some wanted the binders and we were going to do disc and we had to add that one.
Right.
Piece to it.
Yeah.
So they'll get their.
Okay. So we'll have a more detailed document that we can.
Yes, you'll have the lineup.
Okay. And then for us, then if there are some questions or comments that you have between now and close the business Friday, maybe over the weekend, if you can get that to us.
Close the business Monday would be, yeah, we.
That gives, Monday is, gives you time?
Yeah. I mean, if you have them, you don't have to wait until Monday.
I'll try to consolidate them so that you didn't get.
Okay, that's fine. But I want to make sure that you all have your, your binders and everything or be, or.
We have binders in the office. It's just that some prefer disc and that's what we're waiting on.
It's going to take a minute to burn the disc for it.
But if you all can start sending, sending us, if you can send your questions in and then we can start to consolidate them and then get them over to the administration so they can begin to look at them in anticipation for Wednesday's work session. Any other, anyone have any recommendations or comments or thoughts in terms of the process that we're in right now as far as additional questions, comments, input, follow-up in anticipation for next week's work session? Well, if you have any, oh.
So, you know, I'm, the behavior, let me just talk about these. So as you talk about pushing.
I'm talking about process at this point, right?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, then I'll.
But if you have some specific suggestions, you can send those in.
I'll send, I'll send them on.
Dr. Gabriel?
Will this be put on our website?
It's there.
Yes.
Website?
Yes, this will go on our website.
Okay.
Yeah. Because members of the public will have the opportunity to review it just as we are. And, you know, as they prepare for any comments and thoughts that they have on the superintendent's proposed budget.
Right.
At this point. Anything else then for today as far as the budget process is concerned? Ms. Ingram, anything else? Thank you. Love, no paper. Dr. Boone?
No, I thank you for the great discussion and look forward to continuing discussion next week. Hopefully you saw, heard a lot of the conversations we've been having over the last year. So reflected here, not a hundred percent, but I think we're making some movement.
All right. Well, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting and we will see everybody next week.